Good evening, everybody. Thank you. Today is Monday, July 15th, and the time is 6:00 p.m. We're here for a work session of the Budget Workshop. We do have a barely minimum quorum present. We do have council members Hill and Brianna Smith absent. But we are calling the meeting to order. Item number two is our citizens' appearance. Do we have anybody that has signed up? We will skip over the reading of the stuff there and move on to item three, which is presentations from our service organizations. Before we get into this, just a little bit of background. This year, or actually last year, we commissioned a subcommittee of this council to take a look at the way that we choose and allow service organizations to come before us and present their request. The committee was composed of Jim Walker, Beechey Matthew, and Dawn Carroll. And it seemed to me like we had just done it a couple of years before, but in reality, the last time we reviewed the rules was eight years prior. So it was a very opportune time. They did make some changes, which are necessary from time to time and hopefully helpful. We are on a rather tight budget tonight, so each organization will have 10 minutes. I will cut you off at 10 minutes. And yes, I realize, Art Center, that I am cutting into your time. But I wanted to set a little bit of groundwork there. So our first presentation is from the Art Center Foundation. Maybe we'll move to them. I thought they were here.
They are here. They're hanging out in the green room.
Oh, they're in the green room. Oh, sorry. Maybe they haven't done this before. They don't learn that this is where you learn what to say. While we're waiting, thank you, everybody, for giving up your time and being here. We really do appreciate it. We do look forward to the presentations. And one of the biggest debates is, do we have everybody come in? Or the ones that we haven't heard from the furthest back? And that was part of what our committee took a look at. So we're looking forward to the presentations tonight. They're going to feel like they're under pressure walking into a Everybody say boo when they walk in. Nothing like a
And the first up is going to be the Capel Art Center Foundation.
Awesome.
So you'll be the first one?
I'll be the podium.
There's a couple others that are waiting in the holding room, and we'll get them when you get to questions. We'll get the next one.
Thank you.
Hey, you guys.
Lee, you're on the clock.
Okay. Well, hi, my name is Lee Walker, and I'm here on behalf of the Capel Art Center Foundation. I have two of my fellow board members with me, Becky and Carrie. Look, let's, first and foremost, I want to say what a joy it is to be here. We, as an Art Center Foundation, are so grateful, the mayor, the council, and city staff. And we're grateful for this opportunity to ask for your funding and see if it's a good fit. I know there's a time limit, so let's jump right in. The roadmap I'll kind of cover is the, give you a little bit about our background. And then you guys had asked two questions, so I hope to answer those, all right? I don't want to tell you too much about our history, because you guys have walked through it with us hand in hand from the beginning. The city has been such a huge supporter of the Capel Art Center Foundation. But who are we? We're a nonprofit formed to create with the goal of supporting the Capel Art Center. Pretty basic. We're a complete volunteer board. We have 17 board and committee members, and then seven board committees and an amazing city liaison. Our background is, we were founded in 2020, again, with generous seed money from the city. And you guys, I'm really proud of what we have done as an organization in our short four years. We have successfully established a donor base. We have launched and maintained a corporate and individual membership program. We've positioned the Art Center positively in this community. And then we've hosted growing community events, such as our gala and dog show. On a more business side, we've solidified our annual budget, and we've reinforced our community presence. I'm not going to go too much into all of this, because again, you guys have been so supportive of us. And with our DeVos project, I feel like that there's a lot of capacity that you guys know. But feel free to stop me if you want more context. Our operate, just a little bit of our financials. There's our total operating budget. We're, again, completely volunteer, and so most of our money goes back to the Art Center. And we do fundraising activities through, with our, to fund our operating funds, through donations, ticket sales, sponsorships, memberships, and various fundraising events. Okay, but before I get to that one, I'm going to come back here. You guys asked us two questions. The first one was, have you coordinated or duplicated your efforts with other art organizations in Capel? And the short answer is yes and yes. So let me just tell you, we coordinate with other arts entities in Capel, but we don't duplicate. And so when I think of an analogy, it's we're all on the same ship. And that ship is creating and supporting a vibrant arts community here in Capel. But we all have different ORs to pull that along. And our OR is uniquely focused on the Capel Art Center. That is our mission. And so, yes, we have tons of opportunities for synergy and collaboration, but we don't really duplicate. So I hope that answers that question. So for example, in our gala, you know, we had the resident companies. They were the entertainment, right? And so we did that for them, so that they could showcase the amazing local talent we have. They did that for us, so that we would have incredible entertainment for our gala. That's something unique that no one else has to offer. With the dog show coming up, Capel Creatives may be doing a part where they do a painting or a creative booth. So like I said, lots of opportunity for collaboration and synergy, but we don't duplicate efforts. Okay, now, the big question is, why do we want this money? What are we going to use it for? So the plans for the grant, if you guys, do y'all remember the DeVos consultation? Okay, Brett with them recommended that for us to take it to the next level, that it would be helpful for us to have a paid employee. As you know, most nonprofits and foundations do. Being a completely volunteer board, for us to truly take it to the next level, we feel like we need some sort of consistent and paid assistance. So, okay, so here it goes. The $20,000 grant would fund a part-time position, which would help us with our fund development and donor engagement initiatives. It's crucial for providing, and I would highlight those two words, consistent and professional customer service to our donors, which is limited by our volunteer-only organization. This would allow us to enhance our communication on a regular basis, improve retention of donors, increase our fundraising efforts, and expand our membership marketing. This obviously would directly impact our strategy and our mission of supporting the Capel Art Center. Okay, that kind of is it in a nutshell. I wanted to be very respectful of the time. But I wanted to say, in conclusion, Marvin Franklin, who is one of our committee members, once said that we are a coalition of the willing, and I loved that. We have, all of the volunteers have a lot of heart, a lot of passion for the arts, and yet not very much time. And so to take it to that next level, as Brett recommended, to have that small but mighty, consistent, weekly support from an administrative assistant, I think, would be what we need to take it to the next level. Okay, how did I do?
Very good.
What's my time? I want to
Since I talked for about four minutes, you did very well. So I have a question for you, Lee. The part-time person that you're looking at bringing on, what percentage of time would they spend working with the Arts Council?
With us?
Yes.
Okay, with the CACF, 100%. That would be their job, is to focus on artwork. You know, like the Capel Ed Foundation, for instance? You know, they have an administrative assistant that works part-time. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, well, partially, because I saw you said $20,000 would go toward. So I thought, I was sitting there thinking that was the part-time, but that's just a portion of the salary. Got it?
Yes. We wanted to be a little general in that space. So as we look at, we've never done this before, honestly. So as we looked at hiring someone, if there was some money left over that could go to Mark doing something different, we wanted to be able to have kind of that general, that space to do that. But the big idea is that it would go to someone's salary.
Ravesh?
Thanks for the presentation, Lee. I understand that this is going to be an annual funding, but do you know now if there's going to be a recurring need in the future?
That is a great question. I love it. So when we talked to Brett, his idea was that once we, as a foundation, are generating about $300,000 to $400,000 a year in fundraising, that then we would be able to hire a full-time person to be able to do that. This would kind of be that bridge. So it's kind of a catch-22. In order to kind of go to the next level, we need this assistance. And then in order to have the assistance, we need to be at the next level to pay for it, right? And so when we saw this opportunity, we were like, this is perfect, because it's that bridge for when we ultimately, as a foundation, we would like to be able to hire and staff our own person.
Thank you. Dawn?
To confirm something, I think I heard you say, so is this, so the Ed Foundation has a similar type role to this, is that right? So I don't, I'm not saying we're replicating that, but that, there is an example of hiring this type of administrative person or something to be the consistent?
Exactly.
It actually does pay off in the long run, right?
Yes.
That just confirmed that that's what I heard correctly.
And I think it frees us up as board members to do what we want to, which we're best at, which is forming relationships, cultivating donors, creating amazing experiences at the Art Center to complement what's going on there. Just that kind of maintaining our donor database, and all of those emails and all of that kind of stuff that has to happen as a part of it. That just consistent push.
Right.
That is where this would really help to then free up board members to be able to do those other things.
Really keeping the board members on point, right? Let me keep them in the right direction. Okay.
Exactly, yeah. But yes, to your point, I think we would use the Ed Foundation as a model, because they've had that be very successful for a while.
Good, thanks.
Kevin has a question.
So number one, do you guys already have a, like a candidate or a person in mind?
No.
Okay, no worries on that. Second thing, that, I just want to make sure I understood what the mayor was saying. So that, do y'all have additional funds that would go towards that part-time person? Or would that full $20,000 be just for that part-time person?
Mayor, the way we're looking at it now is that $20,000 would just be for that part-time person.
So you wouldn't have any other supplemental money, like from the foundation, like to pay them 30? I'm just curious, if this was just $20,000 part-time person?
Yep, that's what we're thinking.
Got it, okay.
So my question was, what percentage of time do you expect that person to work?
Oh, you know, I think the Ed Foundation person works two days a week, right? So I mean, I think we were thinking 15 hours a week and pretty flexible. I think we didn't want to put the cart before the horse. We wanted to make sure we had funding before we explored that. But I think it would be a pretty flexible position as well.
And one more follow-up.
So.
You're the mayor.
Obviously, the gala and the dog show were successes, so you're repeating those. What other successes are you repeating this next year? And what have you decided to discontinue that didn't work so well?
Mayor, that's such a good question. Okay, something that I'm very excited about is our membership program. That is something that we are now in our second full operating year, going into our third membership campaign. So the idea of creating this community and fellowship of people who are very interested in the arts, and then want to have a good time together when they come to the Art Center, that's actually happening now. We have repeat donors who are coming back, and individual donors, and then also our corporate donors. So that's another, I think, very successful initiative we have. We're looking at doing a seed campaign, another capital kind of fundraising event that would be happening in this next year, so we're looking towards that. And what's something that we're strategically abandoning? I'm trying to think, because we really are pretty young there, right? Like, most nonprofits, right, 30% of all nonprofits are gone within the first five years. We're in year four, right? And so we still are, I'm not going to say we're a baby organization, but we're definitely teenagers. And so I think we're still looking at, we don't want to take on more than we can handle. And so we want to do a really good gala, we want to have an excellent dog show, and we want to have an excellent membership program that provides a lot of value to the people who bought in. And that's kind of where we're staying in that space. So I don't think there's anything we're really ready to abandon, just because it's not a
Thank you. So Kevin had another question.
Thank you.
I was just going to ask about, like, you know, I know recently council, I said recently, in the past year, year and a half, we gave the resources to expand the Art Center staff.
Yes.
So there's that. So I didn't know if there was any discussions about with Janine, about like if there was any additional bandwidth to be able to tap that you could take advantage of for this role versus the ask that you're asking today. I just want to ask a question.
Kevin slash Councilman Neville.
We can go with Kevin.
My last bullet point before being respectful of the time limit is that I just wanted to make sure, we wanted to call out Janine and her amazing staff. The amazing mayor, council, and city staff are incredible. And we feel like the three of us work really well all together. So I, I think, and what Janine does, obviously, you guys won't read Dan Kohler. I mean, what the Art Center is doing, and their rentals, to have their staff has been amazing, and they're wonderful to work with. But they're really not in our lane. You know, our lane is a foundation that supports the Art Center. And so with that, there isn't really an overlap, because it's, our job is to work with them and coordinate them, but it's not their job to do our administrative work. That's our volunteer, or then our own paid employee. Does that answer that?
Absolutely, thank you for that.
Counsel, any other questions? Well, thank you very much. Thanks for coming out, and thanks to everyone that's supporting you and coming out to give you moral support.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the attention.
All right, next up is the Capel Historical Museum.
Good evening, thank you for having us. As you know, we are the Capel Historical Museum. This is our, we're actually in our second year. 2025 will be our third year. When I heard her say that about the five years, I'm going to go home and really pray hard. We are open at the Capel Historical Park from Monday to Friday, 11 to 5, and Saturday from 10 to 1. And that's a lot of hours. And we rarely have a day when we don't have people in the park looking around to see what Capel is all about. Now, I sent out a video. Did everyone see the video? Okay, good. That's what we've done so far this year. And so I wanted to make sure you had that record of what we've been doing. So what are we going to do the rest of the year? We are going to, we're really excited. In August, we have Randy Kirkland, who is a descendant of the Kirkland House family. And we're having a special presentation. Oh, I need a new slide. Sheila's telling me I didn't do a very good job. Just tell me I'll go to the next one. One more, one more. Okay, now I'm going. Okay, so, sorry, Sheila. Anyway, so he is going to come and give a talk about the Kirklands. And for those of you who don't know, the Kirkland House is 1904, and it was moved into the park. And then the city of Capel refurbished it, and it's quite a special home. And so we're going to have a invitation-only program. Y'all will be getting invitations, and it's going to be quite special. September, we are having its National Hispanic Heritage Month, and we're having a Hispanic festival. And we're very excited about that, because the lady that's running that for us, she has given, she has put these on in Southlake a couple of times and been very successful. So, and we've got several sponsors for it, so it's just turning into a thing. I will be, I will actually be with the event people in the city of Capel soon, because although I argue that most things aren't events, I'm going to tell you this one's an event. And so we will be talking about that. But there will not be food, okay? There will not be food, so I won't have to do that. We're having food trucks. So anyway, I will be with you guys, you know, to make sure that we're doing that appropriately. October is Scare on the Square, which is a city event. I personally love Scare on the Square, and it's always fun. Kids come, they're dressed in costumes, they just have a really great time. And then we're having Halloween in the Park, which is a night event with, you know, tarot card readings and a haunted house. And so it's going to be kind of a special deal. We haven't done that before. We're having a Veterans Day celebration. We have a veteran who is working with us, who's disabled, and she's working on the visitor's center. But she was quite excited about being involved in that. So that'll be really great. And then Vintage Christmas in December. For those of you who don't know, that's a city event. And city of Capel last year, I don't know what the difference was, but the city of Capel last year publicized it, did an amazing job, and there were hundreds and hundreds of people. So we're all excited about that. Okay, so if we could go to the next slide? Yeah, all right. And I think these are out of order, maybe. One more? Yeah, they're out of order. I'll talk about the budget in a minute. So what's next? What are we going to do? We have a newsletter that just got completed, and it'll be going out monthly to our mailing list. We have a new grant writer, Van Tori, who has applied for some grants with the state of Texas and some other people. We have a podcast that's online right now, and it is dropping every Saturday. And it's very, it's done by one of the interns, and it's really good. And it, the last one was the Dust Bowl and How It Affect Capel. And it was just really kind of fun. So she's doing that. We're publishing a museum pocketbook, which shows all the museums in the area. And it's really small. We're going to sell it in the gift shop. And one of our interns put that together. He had seen one of these, and so that's exciting. We finally found a cookbook publisher for the Minyards that isn't going to cost, you know, $1,000 a book. And so that's being done. We have new stock in the store, which will hopefully translate into new money. We have pottery that is handmade and signed, and it's from the Dallas Art Guild. And it's really special, and it's not really expensive, okay? We're working, I have one minute left. Okay, well then, let's get a budget. Okay, so we changed our grant request to $50,000. And the reason is that not all of Grant last year was actually funded. And we actually have made enough money this year for operations for next year, which is what I told you all we would do, all right? And we've had sponsors for everything. We've had, I have begged, pleaded, run around Old Town, you know, said, don't you really want to do that? So we're actually in a really good spot for next year. Now, the reason I'm here, though, is that we need a storage building, and so I'm asking if you would fund that. And we also need some landscaping, and I'll tell you why. The park dirt, there's something wrong with it. It has huge cracks in it, no matter how much water you put on it. And we need to have someone come in and really kind of redo that dirt and to try to figure out what's going on. We've put, I mean, I can't tell you how many gallons of water on that thing, and it doesn't make any difference. And the cracks, like, go to the middle of the earth. I mean, I've never seen anything like it. So those are the two things we're asking for, the storage building. I would like to get all of the museum things out of my storage unit. All right? And so those are the two things we're asking for. As far as, like I said, operations next year, we have that covered. Now, I will tell you that the one thing that we're hoping for next year, because I'd hoped we could also do this, but we are working with the city to get an agreement to be able to rent the buildings for certain things, and also to be able to have our programs that are called Capel Historical Museum Presents. And those are ticketed items. But until we finish the agreement with the city, we cannot do that. And that would bring in income as well. Yay, I made next year's budget.
Congratulations. Counsel, any questions for Chris? I think when you said you made your budget and came in under, so, you know, there's not much to
Hey, it's a big deal. It's a big deal. And I didn't get, I didn't get to say that we're giving tours from the park, and we're going to walk through the woods down here over to the senior center and into the park, Grapevine Springs Park. And it's going to be a lot of fun in the fall. I wanted to drive a golf cart, but they've assured me that the police will not like it if I start driving the golf cart on the sidewalks. So I'm not going to do that. But I thought about it.
So in 30 seconds or less, how long does it, is it going to take the grant writer to actually show a return or show a success?
Well, he's already working on those, and he's already submitted a couple. And he's free. So it's somebody we know. And the grant time, and that's part of the problem, is the grant time before COVID was about 12 months, now it's about 18 months, until they get all the grants and they look at them and they But there's a lot of opportunity out there. And we also have this year a corporate donor position, that someone's going to go after some people we know. And so that's kind of phasing it this year, too. And then we also have a volunteer coordinator who's going to volunteer, like all the Boy Scouts and all that. And so we've got a lot of cool things coming in that's going to be great.
Counsel, any other questions?
I'm happy to explain landscaping for them. It's a mess.
I think we're all good. Thank you very much for coming out and telling us what's coming up this next year.
Yeah, it'll be fun.
Thanks, Chris. All right, next up is the Capel Special Olympics. No, you said they, oh, I thought you said Cliff was fixing the bail. Oh. I did not say presenting. Heard that one real. Welcome.
Want me to go ahead at which point? I'm sorry.
In the right direction, yes.
Oh, got it.
Yes, I'm Patty Simons. I'm the treasurer with Capel Special Olympics, and this is Laura Jennings. And she does our, she's our 5K liaison.
Well, thank you for being here, and tell us what you've got going on.
The mission of Special Olympics is to provide year-round sports training and athletic competition in a variety of Olympic-type sports for children and adults with intellectual disabilities, giving them continuing opportunities to develop physical fitness, demonstrate courage, experience joy, and participate in the sharing of gifts, skills, and friendship with their families, other Special Olympics athletes, and the community. Special Olympics offers full participation for every athlete, regardless of economic circumstances. Capel Special Olympics strives to have all athletes participate at no cost to them or their families. We're volunteer-driven. Capel Special Olympics is run completely by volunteers from the community. Our planning committee and coaches consist of teachers, parents, and community members. Capel's National Charity League and Young Men's Service League, CHS Cowgirl Soccer, CHS Basketball, and other community members provide assistance with practices for our sports, as well as other special events. Capel Special Olympics is part of Area 10 of Special Olympics Texas. Our delegation is a community-based program in collaboration with Capel ISD, the Capel Family YMCA, and the city of Capel. Capel Special Olympics began over 25 years ago, and it existed in a few different iterations until 2008. In 2008, a few athlete moms offered to help the CISD adaptive PE teacher grow the Capel delegation. At that time, we participated in basketball and track and field. In 2009, we merged with the Special Olympics Swimming Program at the Capel Family YMCA. And in 2010, we had our first major fundraiser, the Capel 5K, organized by Get Human Shape. Since 2010, we have seen steady growth. At present, we have approximately 90 active athletes with an average participation of 50 athletes per sport over five sports. We offer basketball, January through March, soccer, March through May, swimming, June through October, bocce, July through September, bowling, September through October. Each sport consists of at least eight weekly practices and an end-of-the-season area competition. Basketball and swimming also offer one to two in-season tournaments. Other opportunities we provide for our athletes are an annual awards banquet. We provide letter jackets for our veteran athletes. We participate in the parade down Parkway. We have a 5K run club to get our athletes ready to participate in our 5K fundraiser. We go to the state swim meet in College Station, and we have a unified soccer game with the CHS Cowgirl Soccer Team at the Capel High School Stadium. Our financial position, our beginning balance, we have $5,445. This year's 5K proceeds, we just got, we received $6,753. So the funds available for '24, '25 are $12,199. Our projected expenses have been running $17,000 to $19,000. Our projected balances in the red are $4,800 to $6,800. in the balances in the red are $4,800 to $6,800. We fell short of our $10,000 fundraising goal for the 2024 5K. Our expenses the last 12 months were $17,000. Our average annual expenses over the last three years were $16,744. Grant utilization plans, we plan to use money to pay the YMCA pool usage fees. That'd be about $2,200. Our bocce practice facility rental is $550. Bowling practice facility rental is $3,200. Basketball uniforms average about $1,000. Bocce uniforms, $475. Bowling uniforms, $1,000. Soccer uniforms, $900. State swim meet entry fees, $200. State swim meet coach travel expenses, $400. Total projected expenditure for the grant is $9,925. The 2017 grant that we received was $5,000. We used that for facility rental for bowling practices for seven weeks for $2,400. Storage unit rental for six months for $516. One year of photo storage and sharing for our website, $60. Bocce equipment, $86. Forty-four basketball uniforms at $1,100. Twenty-six soccer uniforms at $1,100. Total expenditure was $5,300 of our $5,000 grant. In the future, we'd like to explore other fundraising opportunities because our 5K is not as successful as it used to be. And we'd like to provide swim team, swimsuits for our athletes. We'd like to host an in-season swim meet or basketball tournament, which a lot of delegations do, and we don't do that presently. We'd like to add participation in more sports. We could have Topgolf, Golf, Softball, Pickleball, Sailing, Kayaking, Tennis, Equestrian, Track and Field, and Cycling. We won't add those all at once, but we would like to possibly participate in some of those, and add participation in more state competitions for other sports. And we would like to send athletes to the national or international.
Counsel, any questions here? Don?
Appreciate all the information, especially the identifying the gap, what the gap is, what the grant would go for, what the old grant, or that's all great information. You mentioned the 5K not being quite as successful. Do you have, you have ideas or logic on what's, what's changed over the years?
I really don't know. It's an outside source. Does the 5K force Get You in Shape, does it? And I think we need to get more involved in getting sponsorships, get our families more involved.
And it kind of fell during the warm, little warm time of the year, so we would kind of look at different times during the year, maybe to host that. We hosted at the park here, so we need to find available.
And it is real close to the, to the-
Capella ISD.
To the Fender Road.
Yeah, Fender Road.
Yeah.
So we kind of compete with that.
And I guess, long-term, the idea is that everything, it would be all self-sustaining eventually. That would be the idea with some of the other ideas, other fundraising ideas you have, that would fill the gap in future years. Okay.
And we don't want our parents to have to pay for anything. We don't want to keep anybody from not being able to participate.
Sure. Okay, thanks.
Jim?
I just want to thank y'all for providing the opportunities that you are to the athletes that you serve.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for your presentation today. Really appreciate it. I just had a question. So the last request, obviously, was in 2017. Was that the last year that y'all had that gap that y'all needed to cover?
Yes.
Okay, so that was my really question, my big question. But thank you, guys, for all you do for the young people of this town. I definitely believe that everybody needs the ability to be able to participate. So thank you, guys, very much.
Ramesh?
You're all welcome to ever come to a practice, or you'll have so much fun, and you'll laugh the whole time. It's just a joyful experience.
So, Ramesh, before you get started, so I got invited to your awards ceremony.
Oh, yeah.
Unfortunately, I got invited two months before the event.
Oh.
And that was so far out, I didn't even connect. And so invite me again, but-
For sure.
Give me a, give me a reminder a little bit closer.
You will love it. It was a wonderful night.
I got a, my next-door neighbor is a member, so.
Who is it?
Rebel Show.
Oh, oh, yeah, April.
Yep.
Yes, we love her. She does our uniforms. She volunteers for us.
Okay, Ramesh?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for doing a great job. This is something that's very close to my heart. Couple of clarifications. Do you work with neighboring cities? And second question, do you have an idea of any, what other cities are funding their respective organizations?
Do it. Do we work with other cities? We do work with other cities.
We compete against other cities.
We compete against other cities.
And they invite us to, like, their swim meet, or their, whatever they host. But we all are independent.
Right.
And how do they raise money? You, she met with the Louisville, they're huge, their delegation.
Yeah, we've kind of patterned ourselves after Louisville. They have, they have a golf tournament every year.
They raise a lot of money.
They raise about four.
But they're probably-
But they have, like, 150 more, or more athletes than we do, yeah.
And their, their athletes are a lot older, so they've been doing it a lot longer than us, too, so.
So do you know how much the city is supporting them? Do you know if they're-
I don't know. I don't know how much. I know that they, that they have been seeking grants, too, because their, their golf tournament is still making about the same amount of money that it's always made, but their costs are increasing, so.
Population's increasing.
Right.
And we're getting younger kids now. We're, like, getting them elementary participating. We're, it's not just the older athletes. So we have a wide range of athletes now.
Yeah, we're really growing.
We're gonna keep them active.
The last gala was at the Irving Bible Church, right? Yeah, I was there. And we provided some of the toys and some of the gifts from the city.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
We got, yeah, they have the stuff in. Yes, they love that.
They love that, yeah.
Yeah, and that's the second year y'all did that, the year before, too.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring that up. Yeah, it was a great event. I attended. Thank you.
A night.
So when, when you bring your athletes in at a relatively young age, do they typically stay with it for life?
Yes. Families get, I mean, it's not just about the families, I mean, the kids, it helps the families, too, connecting the new community. And we could share services and help as our kids get older. So the parents get a lot of benefit out of it, too, especially, like, three of the kids we just got from fifth grade or maybe in the sixth grade. We were just talking about how the dad's, you know, he's new to the, new to our city, and he's participating in the city, and now even wants to coach. And he's getting to know a lot of people in the community just by participating. So it helps the, it not only helps the athletes, it helps the families have some kind of network and some kind of support. So we're a very strong group.
Thank you very much. I can tell that from my neighbors, so.
Yes.
Counsel, any other questions? Thank you, ladies, very much for being here.
For having us.
And thank you for what you're doing for our community.
We love it. Yeah, we enjoy it.
Okay, next up is Love Thy Neighbor. No, I'm sorry, you can't do that, because we lose the forum.
We would lose the forum.
Yeah, you have to hold it.
Hi, my name is Gloria Kennedy. I have lived in Capella for 25 years, and I've been executive director of Love Thy Neighbor for three years. Well, two and a half. I'm halfway through my 30th. So unlike the first three presenters, we're not specific to Capella. We're a North Texas-based charity. We are 100% volunteer-based. We don't have any paid employees. So one of the questions was, you know, counseling people in need. We leave that to the larger groups that we partner with, which I'll refer to them later. But we have at least 150 volunteers plus numerous satellite groups that are committed to helping individuals and families get the basic food and clothing commitments, you know, getting what they need. And that includes giving clothing and blankets to babies that are born in our county hospitals, which, so everything that we do is available to people in Capella. A lot of it is based in our neighboring city of Louisville. In 2010, Love Thy Neighbor started with a group of women who wanted to provide food to those in need, and they did it by partnering with the Salvation Army, who had a kitchen sitting empty. So they were providing meals five days a week. And I can go through most of these very quickly in respective times, so if you want, want to come back to any of it, we can. We determined pretty quickly that a lot of the clients that were coming in for food were also in need of clothing, particularly the homeless clients. So we started a clothing program. We wanted to do it with dignity so that they were paired with a personal shopper to go into the clothing closet and pick up the clothing that they want. And unlike the bigger organizations that we partner with, we actually purchase shoes, underwear, and socks, which, you know, CCA, Metro Press will get, both give you a voucher to go shop in the store, and you won't find underwear in the store. So we're kind of, kind of taking it to the next level by doing that. But that is why we have expenses. We obviously get a lot of clothing donated, but then we buy those items. I have been a volunteer with Love Thy Baby for 10 years. They actually predate Love Thy Neighbor. We spent 15 years as a local chapter of Newborns in Need. And then in 2015, in January, we decided that we wanted to become adopted locally and join Love Thy Neighbor. And a big driver of that was that we were doing more and more fundraising. And when we went to local companies, cities, whoever, they wanted to know that that money was being spent locally, whereas when you're part of a national organization, you have to send a percentage back, and you don't always get answers to where that goes. I mentioned that we have a lot of satellite groups. The largest satellite group for Love Thy Baby is the Capella Netwits. I know many of you are very familiar with them. At this point, they are providing about 300 items a month to us. We are, we are providing 3,000 items a month. So that's, that's still a pretty good chunk. And then, you know, there are a lot of other groups that contribute as well. And the women's groups in Carrollton, Highland Village, and Capella all help us out as well. I think we made the five-year mark. Oh, I, wasn't mine. We made a lot of, just made a lot of scraps while we're making all of those items. So we started putting those into dog beds. I am a regular at the Capella Animal Shelter. They know me when they see me coming with the dog beds. And there are various rescue groups and other, other city shelters that they take them to as well. And we're doing close to 1,000 of them a year. For those of you who are into numbers, this shows how we, the growth over the last 10 years, that weird little spike in the middle was when COVID hit. We had people giving us all sorts of items that, because they were staying home and making items, or they were cleaning up their closets, or they were just giving money because they knew that so many people were in need. And we had to get some government money as well. So we did do a little bit of financial assistance with the government money. And if you see how our expenses lag behind, it's because we are trying to always say, we have what we need for the next year. This year, we're fundraising for next year. So just as this is your next-year budget, this is my next-year budget that I'm hoping to fund. Just, so if you see the, going into COVID, we were at 100,000, and I'm trying to level back off there. And then once, once we're good, start climbing again. We tightened our belt down to 95 this year to try to help with that. North Texas Giving Day has been good to us. We've been doing it for about eight years, and for the last five years, we've gotten 20,000 or so every year. And we're on track to do that again. CoSER, the Parkland Auxiliary, and St. Philip's Church in Flowermane, all have been quite generous to us as well. Flowermane, or St. Philip's has had to cut back this year. It's one of the reasons why we're looking in other directions. So the rest of it comes from individual donors. And this is the first year that we've gone looking to all of the cities that we support. More than 90% of what we raise go to our programs, like the fact that we don't have a building, we don't have paid employees. That shows the breakdown in the budget. Love Thy Baby has the largest piece of that, and that's because I spend $30,000 a year just on flannel for receiving blankets. We do 1,000 receiving blankets a month. And when we tear them into squares, we take strips off of them. Those strips are given to the Capella netwits who make a double-sided flannel blanket with those. So we have a lot of ties to Capella. It's hard for me to show you just how many people in Capella are being served, but I know that they are. I know firsthand that they are. I've helped neighbors, I've helped, you know, I've reached out to the fire department, under Smith fires, to see if the families need anything. We do everything that we can. Questions? Counsel, any questions?
Thank you, Mayor. I think I saw somewhere that you helped 2,000 families. Is that, was that right? Whatever the number is, do you happen to know the percentage of that number that are Capella residents?
I don't. We, we know that women who are having babies anywhere in the DFW area that don't have insurance, have bad insurance, are told to go to Parkland and, or John Peter Smith. So we, so whatever percentage, you may know what the percentage of those in need is in Capella, that percentage of women are going there. And then we do know that that they've visited the food pantries and the clothing closets as well. We just don't track by area well enough. I mean, I can give you a good answer, sorry.
Thank you.
Kevin?
Well, I have to say, my mom is a Netwit, so very familiar with your, with your organization.
She knows me well.
My, my question is, is, so $2,000 request, I heard you said you're trying to level up some expenses and stuff. Are you looking at this request as a one-time request, or is this something that would potentially be ongoing for the future? What's your thought on that?
Well, this is our first time coming here, so we weren't entirely sure what to expect. I went with a low request going in. Ideally, we would like people that support us to be able to support us annually so that, because that helps when we do our budget. We kind of look at it and go, okay, we made this much from North Texas Giving Day. Should be able to do that again. We should be able to count on the same donations that we received the previous years. We know there's always some fluctuation to that, and we adjust our budget as that happens. So, yeah, I would like it to be recurring, if that's something that's possible, but we will take whatever we can get.
Understood. And the reason why I ask is, kind of like the Special Olympics, you know, they, they just had a shortfall, so, and they don't always request every year. So I just wasn't sure what your, your outlook or thought was.
I mean, we, like others, that, we do have other grant requests in everywhere that we can find and think of. So if we, and if we start getting larger amounts other places, then, then I may not come back, but I would like to.
Thank you very much for your answer. Appreciate it.
Counsel, any other questions?
And I would just kind of like to point out that the Netwits do do their own fundraising, and they, and I know that you provide items, materials to them, but we do as well provide some materials to them, so.
I got it. I knew the, I knew who the Netwits were mainly through his mom, but I knew what they were doing, but I didn't know where they were, where the output was going.
So, so Love Thy Baby meets in Farmer's Branch, and, but there's at least five of us that live in Capella. And one of them was Paula Feldman, who had joined the senior center and decided to start a group there. And so Wanda Singer and myself have gone over and shown them how to make things, or, you know, where we think they can improve upon things. We've done everything that we came to support them. But, you know, Paula didn't, we could probably start a group there. And we know, you know, obviously, we follow what a success it has been. I know it's gotten awards.
Well, thank you for your organization for filling that void.
Thank you. Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Woven.
Automatically?
No, but there's a clicker.
Oh. Hi, I'm Jackie Rukowski. I'm the new executive director for Woven Health Clinic. I took over in the beginning of January. So hopefully, if you have questions, I'll do my best to answer them. Big fixie. So Woven Health Clinic, if you don't know, we provide low-cost healthcare to uninsured and underinsured adults, starting at the age of 18. At the age of 65, most of them adults go on to Medicare. But if they cannot get on Medicare, then we will see them as old as we have someone who's 83 years old. But generally, they start having more healthcare issues, and then there are things that we just aren't able to treat ourselves. So Woven's been around for over 30 years. We started- But generally, they start having more healthcare issues, and then there are things that we just aren't able to treat ourselves. So Woven's been around for over 30 years. We started out through a partnership with two United Methodist churches. And then there grew, we were originally Metrocrest Community Clinic, and there was always some confusion, from my understanding, between Metrocrest Services and Metrocrest Community Clinic, so they changed our name to Woven to really show the integrative services that we have. And then in 2021, we were able to open up a second clinic in Carrollton through a partnership with the city of Carrollton. So those are our two locations. And we are an NCQA-recognized clinic by the National Commission of Quality Assurance, which means we are a patient-centered medical home, and we put our patients at the center of their medical care. It also means that we have to constantly improve our, the way we treat patients, the way we look at them, and making sure that we're treating every patient uniquely, because everybody is different. And that as we continue to improve that, our services, then our patients' health outcome and, health outcomes improve as well. And this is a recognition that we have been able to get every year. When we started applying, it's something we have to go through every single year. It's not handed to us. It's quite a lengthy application and process and a lot of reporting that we have to do. So currently, we have 156 unique patients. This is 2023, 324 patient visits, and that is the breakdown of where we're seeing patients. Our mental health services, that is something that ended, it was only about two or three months, from my understanding, last year, because we lost our counselor. We have a new partnership with the Caneta Center for Healing and Empowerment, Empowerment and Healing. And they provide us with a mental health specialist that we now have in the clinic that we pay for. It does not cost our patients anything to see that, that mental health specialist. And then our specialists are neurologists and dermatologists. So for the first six months of 2024, we've seen 300 patient visits. We anticipate by the end, 600 patient visits. That is our forecasted impact on that. And then this is the current grant that we received last year, $6,500, even with the patient contribution, if there's still a shortfall for us as patients are seen. This was the expenses that we used it for. Because we were getting ARPA funds, we had to be really careful not to double-dip. So, in fact, we took all of the funding out of ARPA for our vaccines, and then utilized some of it to purchase, or, well, what we had to give out to our patients. So I think in my report, it shows how many we've given out already. And these are all of our patient services. So it's primary care, it's women's health, and women's health is also free mammograms through our partnerships, preventative care, our dermatologist, neurologist, the counseling, nutrition counseling. We do have low-cost labs for our patients. We also have a partnership with Dallas Medical Center, so our patients can get physical and occupational, oh, no, wait, physical and occupational therapy as well for a low discount. And these are in-kind services. We have a partnership for free eye exams and glasses for our patients. We are also a partner with Moncrief Cancer Institute, that just happened, where we are cervical cancer, cancer screening partner within. And then labs for new patients, medications through our partnerships with Direct Relief, MAP International, AmeriCares. They give us medications, and we give it out to our patients at no cost. So all our patients go through some education, either through nutrition counseling, or sometimes it's one-on-one counseling with our medical assistants or our doctors in regards to their healthcare, especially our diabetics, who need, newly diabetics especially, who don't know how to do insulin shots and all of that. That is one-on-one education with all of our patients. These are some of our community achievements for our patients. So 89% of our high blood pressure patients are controlled compared to 54% of patients in the U.S. 60% are in remission. 15% of our prediabetic patients move to normal levels within 12 months, and 94% of every dollar goes directly to public. These are some of our partnerships. There are more, but when a patient comes in, they're screened for social determinants of health, because we like to treat the whole patient. And sometimes it's not just about physical health, it's about food insecurity, financial insecurities, and these are some of the partners, partners that we refer our patients to. Direct primary care. So direct primary care is a membership model that we started in the beginning of this year, started a little bit last year, but really started to kick off this year. And it helps us to, ways to remain to be sustainable, so we're not, we know that grant funding isn't always guaranteed every year. And so our goal here is to, one, go after employers who don't provide healthcare insurance for their employees, to provide them with some sort of healthcare. And then also for individuals who come to the clinic a lot. And so this is a membership fee that they pay, and all the services are included in that membership fee. So if you, if you don't know, if I could mention it, the city of Capel through ARPA funds have enrolled 50 city Capel residents who are low-income and uninsured. And that guarantees their healthcare. It'll start it in May and then ends in, I'm sorry, start in June and it'll end in May, or May and then end in, actually, June. And this talks about those ARPA funds that we did receive. The reason why we are requesting an increase in funding for the community services grant is the ARPA funds run out at the end of December. We plan on, so I don't know if you knew, we had pop-up clinics in the city of Capel at the Core, and we really saw that take off this year. In fact, our main doctor, Dr. Barbaria, goes to those Capel pop-up clinics, which means she cannot be at our clinic seeing other patients, so we truly dedicated her to Capel. And so we missed her seeing maybe 20 other patients at our clinic. Even sometimes, in the very beginning, nobody would show up. But then we started to see them come more and more. Those clinics will start up again in, when school goes back. The Core wouldn't let us have it during the summer because of camps and things like that. And so that's why we are asking for an increase in funding. I had my New Jersey accent kick in, so it's a little fast. I'll answer any questions.
Well, thank you for your presentation. I, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
What percentage of her time does Dr. Barbaria spend in Capel?
So it was every Tuesday for several months, from January, since I've been there, from January until the last pop-up clinic, I believe, was in May. So it was every Tuesday.
Thank you.
And we'll start those up. We've already got a request into the Core to get those started up again.
Ramesh?
Thank you, Mayor. Jackie, you mentioned that we added 50 Capel residents this year, so that is an increase from what, what was the number the previous years?
For memberships? We, this is the first year we're doing it.
Okay.
Yeah. So as part of that ARPA funds, we were trying to think of ways, how to really, you know, be fiscally responsible in using those funds, and then also providing and extending that healthcare to residents of Capel. That would go past the end of December. And they are using it. In the month of June, we had 31 patient visits by 19 members of the city of Capel, which means they came more than one time a month. It's unlimited visits. That's the beauty of it, too. And they are using it.
Can you, I'm sorry, did you have your hand?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Just a follow-up question. Did you say 50 Capel residents were getting subsidized insurance through your program?
It's not insurance, and it's, it's an alternative to your traditional health insurance. So with the membership, you know, you pay, I pay $300 a month just for myself for health insurance, and I go to the doctor once a year, right? So for an employer or somebody, you know, if, if an employer purchases, you know, we call it a, it's really not health insurance, it's, it's non-traditional, that they're providing their employee with some sort of primary care, so they're not going to the hospital, the ER for their care. So with this, then, yes, they, they agree to enroll 50 members. So otherwise, you know, we were getting reimbursed from ARPA every quarterly. Now those 50 members, they're not, we're not getting reimbursed. We were already reimbursed, and that'll come out monthly, but we don't count them again when we give our quarterly report. So now they'll be out. It's like if you saw a quarterly report now for June, there is 1% of Capel patients who qualify for ARPA, that part of the ARPA grant. Explain that.
Thank you.
I probably didn't explain it correctly, I'm sorry.
Counsel, any other questions? Thank you for the services that you provide to the city. You know, we've been a participant for many, many years, so thank you for your, your time tonight.
Thank you all so much.
All right, moving on to item number four. This is a presentation to discussion regarding special revenue funds. Jessica Almendes.
If I could do a minute break then?
Yes, we're going to take a two-minute recess. Let's, let's do that to five minutes.
It's a little sad.
Yeah, he thought it was a state.
I thought it was a state.
Okay, we're gonna reconvene into the work session of the city council. Time is 7:06. We're gonna make a slight deviation and I'm gonna ask the council, do we wanna discuss the funding levels of the charitable organization at this point for the four or five that we've seen tonight?
Mayor clarification?
Yes, sir.
So would we be just having a discussion to recommend what to put on the final budget for the other council members that aren't here to review as well?
That is correct.
Thank you, Mayor.
We would not be making a final decision tonight. We would be making a recommendation and we'll go into the budget.
Thank you, Mayor.
Can I interject? So then on the 29th, we would bring this to you because that's the final meeting and we would bring this to you. You may even see it on the 22nd if you give us the numbers tonight so that you would see how it looks in the budget.
Awesome, thank you.
And you can make a further decision.
Ramesh?
Clarification, Mayor. Are we making a recommendation on all the line items or just the presentation presented ones?
All of them. Don?
Clarification. The word for the night.
Can you clarify?
The blue are all...
No change, no.
The blue is hot. I believe it's hot-funded.
Hot-funded.
Is that correct?
It says right down there.
So foundation is not hot-funded?
As it currently stands today, yes.
I mean, is it eligible to be hot-funded or is it?
I'm gonna talk to Mr. Hager.
Okay, we don't know for sure. Okay. Excellent.
Ramesh?
I'm going to pull the new report, Mayor. Clarification. So let's say in principle, we say yes to this, right? At the end of the day, when all of these small items add up to the larger number and either we think it is too small or too big, what happens then? Do we come back and look at the small, the underlying items and go back or make a decision up top and say, we need the budget to be up five or down two and then see how it goes down?
Yes.
Okay. Yes to what? Up, down, or bottom out?
No, it'll go... Typically, what's gonna happen is we're gonna see a budget that's gonna come in, that's gonna be under the 3.5% rate. It most likely will not see a change in the tax rate. If we, if there are, at least at this point, I'm not expecting to see a change in that or at least not significant. If there is a change in it, then we'll have the ability to come in at that point and take a look at large-ticket items that would be able to reduce that number down if that was what you chose to do.
There's more philosophical question because I see the number here is, this year's request is lower than last year, so, thank you, sir.
Kevin?
So I wanna throw something out here. Love to get the rest of the council's temperature on here. I really enjoyed the Special Olympics presentation. I think that they provide a tremendous service for our community. I am actually incredibly impressed with how they manage their funds. The fact that last time they came in 2017, it was because they had a small budget shortfall. They came to us just to bridge the gap, if you will, and haven't been back since then. I love their future outlook for what they want to try to do. What I see is they're trying to be more inclusive, roll out more programming, bring more athletes, get them out and get them active, and I love that. To me, that represents what Capel is all about. So I would like to propose that we give them more than they're requesting. It's a little outside the box. I know I've never done this before, seen this done, but I would recommend maybe we give them some additional funds to help launch some of those programs, those future outlook programs that they were kind of proposing on there. And honestly, what Mayor, what I was asking Mayor was if I could go run out and talk to them about that, but it would've broke the quorum, so we've had to stop the meeting. So I don't have any additional, like, I'm really not sure what type of guidance to be able to throw out there, but I would like, I would be interested to see if maybe I was able to get ahold of them and ask them like what it might take to launch a new program or something like that if the council would entertain that thought.
Ramesh?
Thank you, Mayor. Like Kevin, I've already said, Special Olympics is very close to my heart. That said, you know, my recommendation would be that we ask them to come back with a revised number rather than telling, tell them upfront that we're gonna give you more than what you asked for.
That's exactly what I'd propose, to reach out to them, say, hey, you said you wanted to launch a program. What might be, you know, what would you need to launch a new program or something like that? And then obviously learn a little bit more about the sustainability of that program and things like that.
So to keep from having a quorum or walking quorum problem, could you get your staff to do that for us? Okay. We'll take care of it.
Okay.
We'll find out a number. Don?
I would be in favor of some of that, I mean, just not necessarily, but I would, certainly the intent would be sort of...
Yeah, based on her numbers, I think all in, they're looking at like $9,800 and they've got a $10,000 request, so they're already on a pretty tight wire anyways. For about $36,000 under what we funded last year, so I don't know the little...
Special... Oh, you're talking total.
For the total. So I don't know that there's any reason not to do it. I mean, it looks like they're awfully good, and my guess is they'll come back with a few thousand dollars.
That's exactly what I saw, so I would agree with you.
Yeah, no, I'm certainly interested in exploring.
Any thought on Love Thy Neighbor since Kevin opened the door here?
We're a great group.
Well, she said they were about $5,000 short and they only came to us for $2,000 because this was the first year they'd never been to us before.
Mayor, they're also going to other cities. And my only problem, I was going to run after them and explain to them, next time you come here, come with some numbers that are Capel-specific because we are working with Capel tax dollars and it'd be nice to know how many Capel residents are impacted.
I'm not, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna try to speak for them, but maybe, they may have some difficulty tracking that number due to the clientele that they're dealing with. You can certainly make the request of them, but they may actually have trouble giving you a number.
I would support, send them an email, see if they have that information or data available.
Right. All right.
I'd be supportive of providing additional funds.
Yeah, I think it's fine, but you know, like when they're sending all the knitting items or all the blankets to jump to your Smith Hospital, they're dropping it off in bulk and they have no idea. So it's really, I think, more supporting the concept of the idea that there are some Capel residents that are part of the mix, but I can imagine how they would track the ultimate usage of any of their products.
I think her answer was probably about as accurate as you could get.
Yeah.
You take a look at the number of Capel residents that go to Parkland and that's your, that's your percentage.
Yeah.
Because it really does get into the HIPAA stuff and...
Do we have the number for how many Capel residents go to Parkland?
I don't know, probably not.
Okay.
But Parkland would.
Yeah. But what I would say is that not only, I mean, you've got, I'm sure, some Capel residents that might take advantage of Love Thy Neighbor service, but what you do engage is, I know a big group of our senior population who is very engaged in that process of making those items and stuff, so it's a, while there may not be a direct benefit, I know that our citizens are just engaged in that process. So it's almost like kind of a reverse type of thing. We've got more people that are, or a lot of people, I think, that are just engaged in making things, donating things and stuff, so I think you do have some recipients, but you also have people finding a lot of deep purpose in making certain items as well, so...
Empowering other Capel citizens to participate in something like this.
Well, the historical museum dropped 80,000 off of their requests, so...
Just to clarify what I was saying earlier, Mayor, that the two sides, the two sides to this issue, on the service side, you know, the service to young parents or people expecting a baby, that is incredibly valuable. I mean, you can't put a dollar number for that. The other side is, we also have to be the stewards of Capel tax dollars. Tomorrow, if someone says, you know, if the ask is a question, I want to be able to say, this program benefits X number of people and that's the only reason I was asking that.
We will see if we can find out. Don?
I'm supportive of the list as it's presented with the caveats of these two organizations we've talked about.
Me too.
We'll go forward.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
We literally used to spend hours and hours and hours on this, so thank you to the group of Deju, Jim, and Don.
All you. Not at all.
Our Marvin, Nancy, and Wes.
Can we get our marketing people to come up with something other than Dud? Just asking for a friend.
All right, item number four, presentation discussion regarding special revenue funds. Jessica Almendes.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight on our first budget workshop of the night. Our first fund will be covering several funds, particularly the major special revenue funds. So if you recall from our last presentation, the special revenue funds are used to record proceeds from special revenue sources restricted for a specific purpose. Tonight, we will highlight the major special revenue funds, which include the hotel occupancy tax, which is HOT. We'll also cover municipal drainage utility district, also known as DUD. We'll cover infrastructure maintenance fund, IMF, the Rolling Oaks Memorial Cemetery, ROMC, the crime control prevention district, CCPD, and last but not least, the Capel Recreation Development Corporation, also known as CRDC. We will also reference the material provided to you in your packets, particularly, it's gonna be pages 9 to 32 in your packets. I will also be pausing at the end of each fund to answer any questions you may have. A common theme you will see tonight, it will be differences across the board on salary and benefits, but the first fund we will begin with will be HOT. If you can please reference page nine of your packet. So for fiscal year '25, the HOT revenue is projected to be 707,821. In total expenditures are 871,266. Revenue is based on four open hotels in addition to revenue from two permitted short-term rentals. The economic development line is the amount rebated to hotels for building in Capel. This amount is based on four open hotels, of which one is currently receiving a contracted rebate amount. Expenditures in this fund, starting with salary and benefits, is two full-time equivalent art center marketing positions totaling 181,854. The services category are set by council because this is where funding for service in art organizations that meet the criteria for HOT funding are budgeted. The criteria is based on tax code section 351.101, the use of tax revenue to promote tourism and the convention and hotel industry. It is limited to uses outlined in this section. We currently see the Capel Art Center Foundation, Capel Arts Council, the Ballet Ensemble, Capel Community Corral, the Community Orchestra, the Community Theater, and the Historical Society and Museum that could potentially use this fund. The art organizations totaling an amount of 95,700, and the total request for Capel Historical Museum and Society is 60,000. In total, the qualifying HOT funding amount is 155,700.
I'm not following your numbers. She's just getting the detail of what's in that number.
It is.
You're not, you have this as the detail for the blue?
I understand.
But then the balance, like Discover Capel's in here.
Okay.
So it's not in detail that you see.
To be clear, that's the fiscal year '25 budget proposed under services.
Correct.
That's the number that she's breaking down.
Right.
Yeah, sorry, it's in that line. And the budget in the, on page nine, it hasn't been updated to reflect the change for the historical museum, dropping that amount to 50,000. It's still accounting for, as budgeted for 130,000, the initial request.
So that'll go down to 639 and our net will be about 113, is that right?
The ask was bigger than that.
The ask was 130,000 and they're bringing it down to 50, so yes, it would be reduced by...
They're pulling about 80.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was doing 59. Okay, 609 and then 83. I have a question on that. What, since our expenditures are exceeding our revenues, what's the trend looking forward on that?
So this fund, it's essentially is set that the services line is set based on what the direction for council. So, next page. No. Page 10 of your book shows you the hotel occupancy debt tax, the projections for where it's at at the end of fiscal year '25. So you can see that remaining fund balance there is 839,000 and it just kinda shows you how it's being allocated.
Last question.
Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Oh, thank you. So what's the decline? We talked about 400 grand from '22, '23 to '23, '24. I mean, I don't mean to put you on the spot, it may not be information available to us, but do you know why we had such a severe decline in the taxes collected on the HOT?
Are you, from adopted '24 to proposed '25, is that correct?
Well, yes, ma'am. We've got the 1.237 for '22, '23, and then the fiscal year '23, '24 is at 814, but then we're going back up for '24, '25 to just a little bit more than what we had preceding year, but do we know why there was such a severe drop in the, I guess, the current fiscal year?
So typically what we'll do in that amount, we will...
Because the taxes rebated dropped.
So what happens is we work with Mandy's group too, and she works with the hotels, and they provide us projections, so they've provided us their projections for several years, and we use those to budget with. So what you're seeing in fiscal year '24 is what they told us the budget they were expecting in revenues.
Uh-huh.
Fiscal year '23 is what they actually collected.
Okay, so if you look at page nine, though, the actual for '22, there was a million two, but the adopted was 814, right?
The adopted for '24.
For '23, '24, okay, right, right, right. So that's just based upon what the hotels were telling us. Ah, okay.
Do you have any idea where ahead of the game so far this year, like how we're tracking on that HOT, on the revenue?
So you remember what we were at? We looked at that today. We looked at selling...
The HOT revenue, the tax revenue just so far.
I don't have that information, but we can certainly send that to you.
I was just curious if we were ahead, if it looked like we were trending or if we were gonna be off target. I was just curious.
Okay, thank you, I was just curious.
Any additional questions?
Okay, you on?
May I? You know, following along the lines of Jim's questioning, so I understand that the adopted for '23, '24, again, I understand that that's what the hotels told us, it was 814,000, but the proposed budget for '25 is 1,263, so is there a reason why we think that we want to have 40% increase?
We work together with the Community Development Department and they work with the hotels to just create some revenue projections, so they'll provide us the information. This is based on that information.
So '25 budget is also based on economic developments?
Correct, yes.
All right, thank you.
What they provide us essentially.
Is that based on the same number of hotels?
That's based on...
I can't remember how many hotels.
We have, it's four for hotels.
It's still, it's still, it's four last year and four in the projection.
For this year, it's one.
So they're just projecting more usages, it sounds like, more...
It sounds like it. So we, 786,963 is what we've collected in HOT tax so far, but we've remitted 237,000.
But still, the raw number is close to what we projected because the raw number's 814, so we're...
Yeah, right, close.
What month are we in? What month is this?
And this is today, so...
So we just have two more months?
Yeah.
So we, we'll probably surpass it a little bit. Okay, thanks.
The next fund is the Municipal Drainage Utility District. You can find this in page 11 of your packet. So DUD is a special revenue fund restricted for stormwater control development. Fiscal year '25 proposed revenues are approximately 2.2 million and total expenditures are approximately 3.4 million. Revenues are, deep diving into revenues a bit, stormwater revenue is based on the rate study conducted in 2019 and revenues come from a standard fee on residential utility bills and a sliding scale for commercial utility bills. Expenditures are composed of salary and benefits based on three positions recorded in DUD, which is 100% of a stormwater specialist, 50% of the salary of the Assistant Director of Public Works, and 25% of the salary for a construction inspector. Supplies has a slight increase due to a stormwater specialist's position tools. Maintenance has a slight increase due to the cost of semi-annual strip sweeping. Services increased by 443,180 from the prior year because of several projects such as the West Haven Trail, Bridge Creek Civilization Design, Andy Brown Westback, West Haven Creek Design, and Alphal Repair Design. Capital outlay increase is due to the Woodbridge Channel Bank Civilization Construction Fates. At this time, I'll take any questions for DUD.
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. So I see that for the '25 budget, they're expecting a deficit of almost a million plus. That's, looks like a problem to me, so what's her plan?
Yes, so the, for these funds, it's a typical that these are very project-based funds. So it's a very typical scenario that you will see for these. So the net amount is due to the timing of projects and revenue received. So this fund is project-oriented, as I mentioned, and will see fluctuations each year. Our fund balance is there to meet the needs during times when we have scheduled construction projects. These projects are all based on the rate study and over time, the net amount will balance out.
And see that the 2 million capital outlay, you mentioned Woodbridge, right?
Correct.
And why, I'm just curious, why did we not put that in the Royal Lane or Beltline kind of in bond-driven initiative?
Ken, do you have any doubt for that one?
Because it's eligible to be funded out of this one.
But you said the stormwater rate is to do these type of projects, and so we would use that rate to do these projects and not issue bonds.
Okay. Thank you. So if a project is eligible for a fund, for a particular fund, then it will be funded...
So if a project is eligible for a fund, for a particular fund, then it will be funded out of that fund rather than dipping into the general budget?
Dipping into a lot of...
Yeah, exactly. Actually, Harper is in the book. Yes, that's correct. I'm sorry, Jim, was it...
Sure, just to understand, from my understanding, so what you're basically saying is some of these projects extend beyond a fiscal year.
Correct.
So the outlays are there, but we haven't gotten into the next fiscal year budget to catch up on paper with what's going on.
Correct, and we'll have that fund balance to cover that amount?
Yes.
For these future, because they're ongoing future projects.
Yes, yeah, okay, that was well said. Thank you.
Just had a question. The Woodbridge Channel Bank stabilization, is that like the Woodbridge neighborhood at Sandy Lake and MacArthur, is that what that...
It's that big bitch we're working on, behind all those homes. And I meant, your comments were well stated, not mine. I just want to clarify that. Everyone's thinking, yeah, he's got a big head.
Yeah, so I just want to make sure I know what we're talking about on that.
I thought that was the big, yeah, that bank stabilization, that giant project through the...
Well, there's people down the north like Woodlands, the...
Right.
We don't have the details at this moment of the project, but we can certainly provide that at a later time.
Okay, I just, I just want to make sure that I am, I'm just up to speed on what that project is and where that capital outlay is going out. So that's just my question, it's just, not necessarily about the amount, but just understanding the project in general. So, thank you.
Any other questions on Drainage Utility District? I did not see that.
The next one we will review is the Infrastructure Maintenance Funds. Please reference page 24 in your packet. The total proposed revenues for fiscal year '25 are approximately $36.5 million, and total expenditures are $8.4 million. Revenues come from a voter-approved Portersent sales tax and transfers from the general fund. Transfer ends in fiscal year '25 come from the general fund public works streets account at approximately $1.1 million for alleys, sidewalks, and streets, maintenance projects. The larger transfer you see is transferred to fully funded facility and traffic projects for the next five years, totaling an amount of $31 million, approximately a little over $31 million. This is the transfer Kim discussed at your June council retreat, if you can recall. So making the total transfer category $32,267,900. Expenditures include salary and benefits. It is made up of 25% of a construction inspector's salary and 100% of the salary of a second construction inspector, which was moved from a CIP fund to IMF for fiscal year '25. Maintenance includes facilities, streets, and traffic projects. Services include the administrative services fees in the amount of $138,574, which is based on a cost allocation study that allocates an amount for each fund that uses services rendered from the general fund. Capital outlay is approximately $5.5 million, which includes amounts budgeted for street maintenance and repairs of southwestern and street maintenance and repairs of Spanish malls and jet court. At this time, I'm more than happy to take any questions for this fund.
Any questions?
So we'll move on to the next one. Please reference pages 25 to 26 of your packet. And we'll start page 26. The Rolling Oaks Memorial Cemetery, R-O-M-C, total revenues are approximately $2.1 million, and total expenditures are $2.2 million. Revenues come from the sale of burial rights, less the 15% required to fund the perpetual care fund. Burial rights depend on what remains at the end of the year and on inventory. Revenues have remained flat and consistent with the fiscal year '24 budget, as community experiences will bring forth to council recommendations on various fees to adjust revenues. But they believe that this amount was generated, at least, for the revenues for fiscal year '25 budget. Expenditures, first we have salaries. Salaries have decreased slightly due to a turnover in vacant positions budgeted at midpoint in fiscal year '24, and recently hired the low midpoint. Supplies has decreased from fiscal year '24 adopted budget due to a reduction in sales of memorial items. Maintenance has increased due to a mowing contract and the cost of replacement and repair of items already on the cemetery grounds. Services has gone up slightly because of an increased cost on other services, such as insulation, leveling services of the cemetery items. The transfer out is to the general fund for repayment of the cemetery expansion and At this time, I'll take any questions for the cemetery.
The repayment of the subsidy, or the transfer out, does that have a life? Does it have a term or something, or is it going to be perpetual?
It's 10 years.
10 years, okay. How much, you know, how much longer?
It was from, 2009 was the start, so 20...
No, we didn't start repaying it. I'll look and find that.
So that was just startup capital or something? Is that basically what that was?
There was one that did the expansion at the cemetery, the additional projects that were added when the project was getting ready to go to construction. We had issued some debt, and so this was the cash necessary to finish those projects. So that would have been about 2019 or so.
2019.
Okay, so we're probably halfway through.
Jim?
And the mowing contract you referenced, that's the one we just recently approved at the higher cost, so that's factored into this going forward?
It is, and at the moment, so this budget was prepared around March, so at the moment we had, it was going to be approximately $170,000, and now with the change, I believe it's about $135,000 roughly. So we will modify that and have that for you at the last budget workshop.
Thank you.
Remesh?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, this might be a dumb question. For this special fund and others, which column should I be looking? So what I'm trying to understand is, let's say, a fund had a budget of $10 million, and the actual came out to be, let's say, $9.5 million. So what column should I be looking at to see what was the plan and then what was the actual?
So I would recommend to look at what we adopt, so always on the column that says adopted, that would be the budget that we adopted. And so if you see '23, '24, that's what we adopted in that fiscal year '24. And then, so if you, well, first column will give you the actuals. So that is audited actuals from fiscal year '23. So then from there, the second column will give you the budget that was adopted in fiscal year '24. And then where it says fiscal year '24 budget amended, that will provide you so far what has been taken as budget amendments throughout the year. And lastly, that fiscal year '25 budget proposed would give you what we're proposing to council tonight. So I would probably recommend, you could look at that first column for actuals for '23, just to kind of compare from what was actually audited, if you're looking at actuals.
Yeah, I'm taking offline. I don't want to waste other people's time. Thank you.
So to answer your question, 2023 was the first time we did the $250,000 transfer. So we've only done two years, right?
This will be the second year. Okay, so we still got another year to go.
Right, and we have 2034.
Okay. To get that repaid, okay. I do have another question, though. This is more philosophical, more philosophical for this fund. So the deficit continues to get better and covering more and more of its own, but, you know, also depleting the fund balance. So what is sort of, I guess, next steps? Are we going to have to get this to zero, or eventually...
Kim, I'll take that one.
Okay.
We're going to have a session on Rolling Oaks and discuss fees.
Okay, with the long-term?
Yeah, well, that's going to be part of it. Part of it's going to be the short-term, and part of it is the long-term.
Okay.
Because we do not have a, what I consider to be a really good policy on how we set prices out there. And I'm hoping that we will see an increase for non-resident burial costs.
Okay, well, that makes sense. I just, clearly, eventually we're going to run out of land, too, so...
Well, very quickly, if we continue selling it at the rate we're selling it.
Right, okay.
So I don't know that she's going to be able to answer your question very...
I know that may not be so much for the budget as much as us, but I'm curious where we were headed long-term.
We're headed toward a session to figure that one out.
Okay.
That sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The next budget we'll cover is the Crime Prevention District, CCPD, which you can locate in pages 27 through 28 of your packet. And we'll start on page 28. So CCPD is a fund restricted for crime prevention programs, and revenues come primarily from a voter-approved Portersent sales tax. The total crime control and prevention district revenues are projected to be $4,975,501 for next fiscal year. Expenditures are approximately $5.7 million. The fund is exactly as presented to you at the June 11 CCPD public hearing. At this time, I would be more than happy to answer any additional questions if you have any in this one.
Don?
Well, I'm just making sure there weren't any other questions before we have this. I do have one about this, and forgive me, I don't remember. So the services between '24 and '25. Now, that should have already been, I thought that was already budgeted.
That's the...
It went up to about a million four.
It's for the Axon contract, and we fully budget it for the full amount of the contract, and we will, do they come in carry...
Paid out over time. We throw it all in. So like, next year, that number goes down by a fifth.
Remesh, those are the body cameras, by the way.
That's that one week, okay.
Correct, it's a yearly cost of $336,000.
Okay, so every year, that contract will decrease in the next year's budget, it'll get carried over to the next year's.
So is the, I'm sorry, are you done?
Well, of course not.
We'll continue on.
We'll see. We'll go ahead, go with, I'll go to it.
I think I'm going to ask an obvious question, and I hope it is, going from 6.3, give or take, down to 3.9, that's based on 3.334? Yes, oh, yes. Yes.
Correct, that's correct. It's to the sales tax.
Okay, thank you. Kevin?
Well, I had nothing, I was just laughing.
Remesh?
Thank you, Mayor. This fund balance of where we are, is that the right amount? And are we comfortable with that, or should that be increased, decreased?
The fund balance policy for...
Can you explain your question more, please?
So the fund balance that I see here...
Is it the correct amount? Yes.
That's all I needed to know.
But what was the next question, though? Oh, okay. I thought I heard you say something about why is it so high?
I didn't hear that. My question was, is it the right amount? Does it need to be higher?
Oh, okay, that's what I heard.
The 24.5, that's the fund balance, any fund balance for fiscal year '23 is audited. Any of the future fund balances are what we're projecting based on budgets. And they are accurate.
If there are no other questions, I will come back. So talking about, so I know the SROs are in here for all, what is it, 11 or 13, or whatever the number is going to be for this coming year?
15.
15 total for the coming year, we fully budgeted for those. And on salary reimbursement for '25 is going to be $735,000. That's the amount that we would get back from CISD, correct?
They do a 50% cost here.
50%. So if, if by chance the city actually didn't have CISD reimburse us for anything, is that, is the 735 the difference between, is that all that they would owe back to us? And is there any other implication if we were to fund 100% of the SROs rather than...
From my understanding, yes, this is the amount that we would have to absorb if the city were not to get that reimbursement.
Okay, so that's the entire impact would be...
I would just say, I mean, right now you're showing a deficit of 789, so that deficit would grow by the...
Two million and a half, right, right. So I want to, I guess I would propose to my peers, public safety certainly falls in the realm of the city to a great extent. We know the school district is going through its own challenges and trying to rework some additional things. So what I would like to propose to the rest of us is that we, at least for this year, we don't have CISD reimburse us. And part of the rationale is it'll help them in the interim with some of their budget concerns, but previously we did fund, historically we have funded 100% of the SROs, so it's continued to be an additional burden with some of the legislation that's come down. I completely agree with the way we budget, because we have to budget like sales tax is going away. The reality is, it hasn't. So I would like to look at this on a year-to-year basis and see, do we have additional funds that can be utilized for something like helping out the school district with public safety? We have continued to benefit from sales tax well beyond what we budgeted every year. I mean, you can even see it in our adjustments. We've got additional $2 or $3 million even in fiscal '24 that we've already realized to this point, so, and we've been able to do some additional things with some of those funds. So I throw that out there for some feedback from my peers on the idea of, for this year, and I know we have to look at it at a year-to-year basis, it's not an ongoing thing, because we can't commit to something when we don't know what the sales tax resolution is going to be. But knowing we have funds available to cover what appears to be $735,000, is that something that we can discuss? Or I would like to discuss that.
Kevin?
Thank you for bringing that up, because I do think it's something that is incredibly important. Obviously, public safety is one of our top priorities that we have. I do have a question for Kim, and maybe, so would, making that adjustment, would that do anything with our, let's say, what council member Carol just proposed, or Don, sorry, we're casual, we're your Dons in here. Would that do anything, would we have any adverse effects besides showing a increase in deficit, you know, on that net, you know, of the fund balance? Would it do anything with our credit rating? Would it do anything like that? Would there be any long-term implications for doing what Don just proposed? In your best ability to answer that.
When we talk to the rating agencies, we're talking to them about the general fund, or the water sewer fund, or CRDC, whichever fund is issuing debt. So this fund has no debt, so it doesn't have a rating that they would be examining.
Excellent, so, okay, the number one thing, just want to make sure that we protect that, so that's awesome to hear. I, to my peers, I agree with Don. I think this is something that, if we strategically look at this on a year-to-year basis, I want to reiterate that, I do think that this is something that we could do to help that unfunded mandate that Austin has imposed on our school districts. And, you know, this would only affect schools in the city of Capel, so we would only be, you know, funding those. But I think if we were to fully fund those and not get that reimbursement, it could help our neighbors at the school district, help keep our citizens, our kids safe, hopefully reassure the families of Capel that we continue to look at public safety very seriously. And I know Chief has said we've got a great group of officers out there, so I feel, I feel like this would be a really good plan, so. Obviously, hate to see anything with a negative on it, but I think if we look at it from a year-to-year basis and looking at the healthy fund balance, this would be something we could do, and it would be still fiscally responsible.
Kim?
Can I ask a chief partner question?
You may.
So with respect to this budget for the SROs, if we were to pick up the other half, is there any part of the SRO costs that wouldn't be... is there any part of the SRO costs that wouldn't be reflected in these numbers? This is, this is the sum total, big kahuna, total cost? Thank you, Chief.
Ramesh?
Thank you, Mayor. In principle, you know, I completely agree with you guys, public safety is our priority number one. I'm all in to help out our school district. So, the complex thought I'm going to try to share to the best of my ability is, to me, it feels like the school board is intentionally running in deficit to send a message that all the Austin's unfunded mandate is being a load on us. By kind of putting this bill from our side, are we going to be encouraging Austin to be doing more unfunded mandates? Because cities like Capel can afford it. So that is a concern that I have.
I'll just pause there. I'll just answer, just from my standpoint, I suspect we are somewhat of a rarity that having a relationship between the city and the school district, that there aren't other relationships that are like this one. Or maybe cities that have the resources available to do something like that, which is a part of a little bit of my argument, is we do have the resources available. The fund balance has grown for, you know, almost twenty million dollars over the last year, eighteen million dollars or something over the last year, because we have benefited greatly from two things, great sales tax revenue and a staff that has, in light of all the lawsuits, continued to ratchet down our budget to fit, you know, within, you know, fifty-five or sixty percent sales tax reduction that has not manifested itself. So it has allowed us to accumulate some resources that I think we can look at from a year-to-year basis and evaluate. I would even propose that, like, going forward, we continue to budget, just like we budgeted here with the reimbursement, and we have an evaluation at next year's meeting, does this make sense still or not? Based on what's going on in the school district, or what's going on in the city, with the sales tax lawsuit and everything. So it really is utilizing resources that have already accumulated to pay for this one year.
So, if I understood your comment, Don, you're saying that most other cities are not like us, so even if we made this move of bearing the cost ourselves, we will not be sending a signal to Austin that they, you know.
I was gonna address that. The, Austin's not even gonna see this. I mean, it's not even gonna be on their radar screen. They don't, they don't look at what cities, they don't look at the relationship between the cities and the school districts. It's literally, that's just not in their bandwidth to take a look at. I got it, I think Kevin beat you, Jim.
But, I was gonna say, to answer your check, your question slightly tongue-in-cheek, is I think Austin's got plenty of unfunded mandates to worry about across the state, to worry about this, you know, this one little thing. I don't think that's gonna change what we're seeing unfortunately happening on a regular basis, so. I really just, I don't see that, that being a thing. I one-hundred percent agree with what the mayor said. It's, I think we are an oddity, the city of Capel, and the fact that we do budget so well, and honestly, this, this, you know, the litigation, the looming lawsuit that we have, we're waiting to get in front of the judge, you know, it has kind of forced us to, you know, to be ready. And so, this is kind of, you know, kind of the outcome of that, is that we do have some additional funds that are available. I, I'm gonna reiterate that, falling back in the realm of public safety, definitely think this really qualifies for us to do something a little bit out of the norm that we've done the past couple of years to encourage that safety.
Jim?
Okay, so I'm gonna try to answer the other part of your question, although school finance blows people's heads off all the time, it's so complicated. I know they project a deficit when they start the budget cycle of the district, but Diana Sarkar, I think, if you sit down with her, she'll explain to you.
I saw the email.
A lot of that is the function of how they're funded by the state, and so, that's why at the end of the fiscal year, or whenever it finally takes place, they're not actually in a deficit situation, because that adjustment's made, but it's, it's not an intention to try to plead poverty to justify greater taxes or anything like that. Of that, I'm certain, knowing all those folks. And then the other thing, too, that we should remember is that our sales tax, while we don't have solid, you know, numbers again as to, you know, source, last I asked, I think our best guesstimate is, based upon the data the state provides us, that we're roughly at about sixty to sixty-two percent of our sales tax is paid by non-Capel residents. So, when you look at that aspect of it, and the fact that this is sales tax that, you know, roughly two-thirds has been paid by people that don't live here, I think that also kind of adds to, you know, the fact that we've accumulated so much of the sales tax. And it's not just the great staff and the way they ratchet down the budget. I mean, it was the council folks before I got on here that also, you know, dropped the hammer, and all the department heads that made all the cuts and like that to really get it to where that first year, we were living under what would have been the new tax regime, but, you know, our civil justice system grinds on slowly. So, we're still collecting the sales tax, and, you know, we still have this increasing buffer, so. To me, the important thing would be, because I think protecting our kids is paramount. To me, I think the important thing would be to make very clear that this is a one-time, it doesn't reflect a larger commitment beyond, you know, the next fiscal year, and to encourage that no reliance be placed upon it, looking forward to some type of, you know, well, we did it once, so we'll. Because depending on what happens, you know, in Austin with respect to litigation, at some point, we're gonna find out where we're at. And if we find out that we're under the new tax regime that Hager had planned for us so many years ago, then we're, we're gonna see that, that buffer wind down over time, and so. But if someone asked me, well, five years ago, when you spent, you know, a little bit of the buffer on, you know, the safety of our schoolchildren, I'd be able to defend it all day long.
Ramesh?
Thanks, Mayor. And Jim, thanks for reminding me. I think it was last Sunday's newsletter where Jonathan had come in and explained Diane Sarkas, we actually, when you look at the actual, we appear not in deficit. So, given that, I would be interested to see if the Board of Trustees wants our help, and then.
Any questions already been asked?
Oh.
Not from the Board of Trustees, but from the superintendent.
And from the chairman of the board.
And they said yes?
Yes.
Well, they requested that we pick up the full tab this year.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's school finance, okay.
Yes.
I'll get to what else.
So everybody, I've got thumbs up and down on that one. And by the way, this will come up before the council for a vote of the body, so it's not gonna be decided tonight. This will only be what's included in the proposed budget for you guys to formally vote on.
I want you to see it drawn up. Take a look at it.
Okay.
Yo, I'm a thumbs up.
All right, where are thumbs up?
So we're gonna confirm, we are going to remove the salary reimbursement from the school district for the fiscal year twenty-five proposed budget. So when you see this again on the twenty-ninth, that will be removed. That is, unless we hear something different on the twenty-ninth, that's what will get filed on August fifth.
Don't remove it, put it in as zero, please.
Yes, we'll leave the line item there.
Thank you.
Good clarification, please.
Hey, that's why they pinned the big bucks.
There you go.
Okay, continue on, thank you.
So next we'll cover the Capel Recreation Development Corporation, CRDC, which can be found on page twenty-nine of your packet. So a few have already seen this fund, presented at the CRDC board on July eighth. So the fiscal year twenty-five total revenue proposed is five million six hundred and twenty-eight thousand three hundred and forty-nine, and total expenditures are five million eight hundred and sixty-six thousand three hundred and twenty-seven. Sales tax is the largest contributor to the revenues for the CRDC fund. Sales tax for CRDC is half a cent, and it is authorized by voters. The Art Center also provides revenue to this fund from fees. The CRDC debt service portion listed separately on page thirty is restricted to paying for the principal and interest on the city's CRDC debt. The amount shown is transferred to the CRDC debt service fund to make the principal and interest due on the bond. Revenues will match expenditures. CRDC special revenue fund expenditures, going back to page twenty-nine. So salary and benefits include funding eleven full-time equivalent staff positions and ten part-time, non-benefitted positions, plus market and merit increase for fiscal year twenty-five. Supplies category includes routine supplies for the operation of the Art Center, such as production supplies and audio lighting video equipment, office supplies and general building cleaning supplies, and other related items. Maintenance category includes expenditures required for maintenance of the Art Center facility, the core tennis and pickleball center, the senior center, also projects for the city's parks and trails. In fiscal year twenty-five, we're including replacement of an indoor play feature for the swimming pool. The services category include expenditures for the Art Center, such as electric and water utilities, arts education programming, camps, training for staff, and headliner artist programming. It also includes cardio equipment replacement at the senior center. Services also include a reimbursement to the general fund. Capital outlay consists of packages and projects associated with the parks and the Art Center. Some of the projects, from, a few of the projects from the list is a concrete seam repairs for our parks and trails, MacArthur Park playground, a replacement of the playground with a new inclusive playground and surface, basketball goal replacements, six basketball bases and backboards at Andrew Brown West Park, and also a middle school north turf replacement, which is due to an interlocal agreement with CISD. The transfer out is a one-year of useful life transferred to the capital replacement fund. At this time, I'll be happy to cover any questions.
Thank you, Mayor. So the amount that's dedicated for the debt service is relatively consistent. So, are those, are those bonds that are issued distinct to the CRDC so that it's defusing them directly? Or are they contributing to defusing like a portion of our larger bond issuance?
All the bonds that are issued from the CRDC would be, that are sales tax-supported.
Okay, so they're, so they're, these are bonds that are unique to CRDC?
Correct, yeah, sales tax-supported.
We issued twenty-fourteen sales tax subsidy bonds, and then in twenty-eighteen, we did COs, but we pledged some of the sales tax from CRDC because it was for the Art Center.
Gotcha, okay, okay. And then, second question. What, so the reauthorization of the half-cent sales tax was in twenty-thirteen, is there a time limit on that? Like, I mean, because we're already past ten years.
It was a twenty-year.
Yeah.
Twenty-year?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sir. That's all I have, Mayor.
Don't bring that up. Originally, it was gonna be a thirty-year. And there was a compromise made, because some young members of the council didn't understand the long-range impact of having a twenty-year.
But you've been on the council since longer now.
Well, and that's why it's about coming to an end.
That's why we're smiling, because someone at the table.
Well, twenty years is still a good period of time.
Well, that was what I felt at the time.
We're well within the boundaries.
I did have a comment on this one. I had asked Mike to take a look at the usage numbers in the core, because my perception was this summer that the utilization rate at the core has gone up phenomenally. In fact, I mean, I'm having to wait in line in the morning at the core for some of the different machines. And dutifully, the data given to me showed that it's just a seasonal variation that happens in the summer. So, I'm not gonna come and ask for a multimillion-dollar renovation at the core this year. It, I mean, there is a significant uptick in summer usage, but it's been that way for a number of years, and it goes down in the fall and winter.
You know, can I, can I come into that?
Yes, Jim.
Thank you, sir. I had an old friend drive through town to pick me up for something a while back, and he pulled up, he's like, there are people walking and biking and running all over this town. It's like, what, that never happens in Richardson. And I said, well, I don't know what to tell you, big guy, but it doesn't surprise me you're waiting in line for some machines.
Which is a good thing.
It is.
It's really about you waiting in line.
No, the way that it got started was, I wasn't even thinking about, you know, I was there as, as the individual citizen, and what hit me up was, well, if I'm having to wait in line, is everybody else thinking that maybe I need to go find another gym to go to? That was what was going through my mind, and that was what prompted my question to Mike. And the answer is, maybe for about six weeks out of the year, it's, it's an issue, but the rest of the time, when the college kids go back to college, it's not.
In January, January, you did.
Who are?
All the New Year's was a new year.
I know, yeah, but you're, you're ready for that one. It was, I wasn't really ready for the summertime influx. Okay, anybody have any other questions?
And that should conclude, yeah, and that concludes my presentation of special revenue funds. Next, we'll have Water Sewer Fund, thanks, Jerry Young.
Okay, this is item number five, which is a presentation and discussion regarding the water and sewer budget. Are you, are you doing, yeah, item five, and I haven't shown that Jerry is gonna be doing it.
Before Jerry gets started, since we just got to the special revenue funds, the Woodbridge Channel is the one along Sandy Lake, so there's two parts to it. There's what's in front of St. Joe's, which is the erosion issues. What's west of MacArthur is where the planned improvements are to take it underground.
Thank you. So Jerry, you ready for this one?
Yes, sir.
So do you still come sit in the mayor's seat when you're practicing?
I've been avoiding it this year. Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Jerry Young. I am the business analyst within Strategic Financial Engagement, and I'm excited to be presenting the Water Sewer Fund to you tonight. So, for the agenda, I'm gonna start with some general comments about the Water Sewer Fund. From there, I'm gonna get into our guiding principles, and then some projects that we've completed over the years, and then it'll lead us directly into fiscal year twenty-five's budget, and then we'll open it up for comments. So, for the, for comments, the enterprise, sorry, the Water Sewer Fund is an enterprise fund within the city of Capel, and that means that the revenue generated must cover the full cost of providing the service. Those costs include Dallas Water Utility, who provide drinking water to the city, Trendy River Authority, who treats our sewer, and in addition to that, there are annual operating and maintenance costs, such as salaries, supplies, annual maintenance and repair of the water sewer system as well. So you can think about, like, pump station, lift station, as well as water tower and all the equipment used to service the system. So the revenue must also cover the, cover capital costs to expand the system. So that's like the water redundancy project, the water tower rehab. So all these costs are covered by water sewer revenue that is set by the water sewer rates, which are approved by council. The Water Sewer Fund does not receive any property tax or sales tax. So for our guiding principles, we like to keep three things in mind whenever we complete projects or when budgeting for the Water Sewer Fund. The first being water sustainability and conservation. As a city, we feel that it is our duty to recognize water for the finite resource that it is. So we wanna ensure that we have sustainable practices, and that goes hand-in-hand with conservation. For the second principle, long-term financial and capital planning. We feel as though to be good stewards of the city's finances, we need to consider the long-term impact of the future projects that we're planning, and think about what trends are we seeing regarding water and sewer as we prepare for the future. And finally, it is the customer experience. As an enterprise fund, we are reliant on customers, so we need to consider their. As an enterprise fund, we are reliant on customers, so we need to consider their experience as we roll out or implement new projects. So that's why we like to do things one at a time, to give customers the opportunity to adjust, which brings us to some of the projects that we have completed in recent years. So in 2015 is when we feel like our journey really began. It was the first time that we raised rates, and that was due to us completing a rate study as well as a business plan. So each year from 2015 up until 2019, we were increasing rates until we implemented our advanced water meter project. This brought all the city meters to one meter tight, and from there, we, it, we allowed the customers to have time to adjust, and we did not raise rates in 2020, because in 2021, we implemented the tiered rate structure, and that was when we started to charge volumetric for the water. And then in 2022, UB got new billing software. So we didn't want to increase rates as they were learning a new billing software. And from there, we began work to have winter averaging implemented by 2023. And along with that, we were also conducting a water sewer rate study to have the new rates implemented by 2024, which is what brings us here today for our 2025 proposed budget. And I promise, next year, I will do things in order of your packet, but for this year, we're going to start on page 36, which is where you will see the breakout of expenses by department. And this is going to be the same information, just presented slightly different from what is displayed on here, because this is a breakout by classification, which is more the categories that you all are familiar with. So if you'd like to follow along, you can turn to page 35, as I work through our expenses for this year. So starting with the services, for the proposed budget, we have $16,848,647. Seventy-five percent of the services increase can be contributed to DWU, or Dallas Water Utility, and Trinity River Authority. We are just passing along the cost of those increasing contracts. For the capital, that is increasing because we have the new chemical analyzers at the village pump station, so that's going to be that major difference that you're seeing in capital costs between the budget year of '24 and proposed year of '25. For the transfer out.
Jerry, are you on page 36?
I'm on page 35.
So is that capital outlay, the 625, is that a one-time only, or you said it's a new chemical analyzer, or is that going to be a recurring cost that you're going to see?
That is a one-time.
Okay, thank you.
And so with the transfer out, that orange portion, that is our debt service payment for bonds that are issued for the water sewer fund. We did issue additional bonds this year, so that is going to be that slight increase that you're seeing between the two years. For salary and benefits, it represents 16.5 FTEs for the water sewer fund, and that is spread throughout utility billing, utility operations, as well as half of the cost of the public works assistant director. For supplies, there is an increase in utility operations. They have new hires, and they are trying to provide around 15 new uniforms or personal protective equipment for those new hires, not necessarily uniforms. And then for maintenance, we are looking at an increase of parts, the increase of cost of the parts for water sewer line maintenance, as well as contractual increases on the advanced water meter system, and that was approved by council in this, this past October. So with all that, that brings the proposed budget for fiscal year '25 to $22,456,782 for the expenses. And now I will take you to page 33, where we will go over the revenues for water sewer fund. And just to clarify, there is the table version that's provided on page 33, and then there's also the charts that I'll be referencing on page 34. So for the revenues, I'd like for you to keep in mind that the proposed budget is based on the water sewer rate study. So water sales, the actuals for fiscal year '23 came in at a little over $14.7 million in 2023. So the proposed amount of $15.9 million is what we figured to be a conservative amount budgeted. For the water, for the sewer sales, we are anticipating about a, one, a little over $1 million increase in sewer sales, which is the figure of $7.3 million that you're seeing for the proposed budget.
Jerry, I've got a question on Kim, and this is going to be for Kim. In terms of the sewer sales, total sewer sales, when we had, what, I, I, NS?
I and I.
I and I, thank you. What would the equivalent number been here, or what was the number back then?
I can't remember the number, but I can tell you, we ended up, it cost us $1.1 million more, that inflow in infiltration.
Okay, thank you.
Interest income. So that's going to be that little, that little green sliver that you see, the proposed amount for interest income for '25 is $305,000. And the difference is going to be that we were budgeting conservatively, so the interest rates that we were planning for, we were estimating them to be low, and they were coming in higher than we initially projected. So the adjustment or the increase that you're seeing is so we're kind of compensating for, or we're trying to have a more in-line figure with what we've actually been receiving. And then.
Back in '22, '23, why did we have a sudden jump of almost $1.2 million in interest payments?
Versus the adopted years and.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So that, that's going to just be because we were, that's actually what we received, but we always budgeted conservatively for those accounts. So we were estimating, we like to budget conservatively, so.
Can I add a little bit?
Yeah.
I think, so for actual to, the actual that we actually received was about $807,000. But for financial reporting purposes, and remember, this is audited, we have to do an adjustment for GASP-72, correct? And so whatever the, the market value is at September 30th, we have to act like we're selling that day, and we have to book it based on market. So there was an unearned increase that we have to book as interest income.
Thank you.
And then for the fees, we are looking at a proposed amount of just over $120,000. There are, there's going to be water sewer impact fees from new development that we are not seeing much of an increase in impact fees, so we're actually showing a slight decrease for the proposed year. And then the other revenue is made up of lease revenue, penalties and interest, and water meter sales. We are projecting $269,500 versus, or I'm sorry, that is the same figure as the adopted year. And from here, I'll take us into our retained earnings.
Jerry, just a second.
This might answer my question, Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you.
So just to clarify, other budgets or other funds have a fund balance. With the water sewer fund, we call it a retained earnings. So this will show us how, show us what our final dollar amount is for the water sewer fund. We begin with the budgeted operating expenses, which is just a little over $2.4 million. We divide that by the number of days in a year to get our daily operating cost of $61,525. From there, we have our projected undesignated retained earnings, which equals a little over $11.6 million. We divide that by the operating cost of a day, and we get 190 days. Our retained earnings policy states that we have to have 180 days worth of expenses. So we are looking at just a little over 10 days for emergency situations for the water sewer fund. So with that, I will open it up.
Any questions?
That was very helpful.
I was thinking that was a great question to ask.
Okay, so, so first, is the 180-day retained earnings policy built into a bond covenant on the financing for the infrastructure, or?
No.
Is that just an internal city policy?
Yeah, it's part of our charter.
Okay.
So it was adopted by council in August of last year.
Okay.
So it's the last time we bought it, or we're going to reduce that.
Okay. And then, so when we show, for example, just comparing gross numbers between the revenue and expense, we've got for actual '22, '23, we had roughly $3 million more in revenue than expenses, and then for the fiscal year '25 budget proposed, we're looking about $1,005,000 more revenues than expenses. So is that where, is that delta between revenue and expenses shown, for example, on those two budget figures, what becomes our, the, the amount retained for the retained earnings?
It, it can be added into there, yes.
Okay, so, to the, but, but that's just looking what we have in support, right, to say, okay, we've, we've got 180 days buffer for expenses, so we could go that long at that projected daily cost, but are we looking at, so what, what are we doing, though, with the excess?
So we do have projects that are also a part of the water sewer fund, which is why we have this undesignated amount. So there are projects that are designated dollars. So we are still, this undesignated amount is more for just making sure we stay within our policy of 180 days and then emergency situations.
Right.
Do you want me to help you?
Yes.
So, so for example, we may have, we had projected 930, 24, we'd have a 20, 20.4 million in total retained earnings. Then, just like we do in the general fund, we have an assigned category, where we have identified projects that we're going to pay for with cash.
Okay.
So we've done that, and we've come down to what is our undesignated.
Gotcha.
And that per policy is where we need, that needs to be 180 days.
Okay, so we're using the excess to fund projects that we need done in cash and not doing with debt. Great answer, thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. There's actually a question for City Manager Mike. Given that we did have a rate increase, thinking about some of our residents that may struggle paying the bills, do we have any mechanisms for taking care of residents that need a little help now and then?
They actually work with Kim and utility billing if they have to work out any particular payment plan. And remember, our seniors have 10%, 10%, 10% on three, you know, three different areas of their billing. So there is, there are mechanisms. The ordinance is really clear about how we handle penalties. Circumstances arise, and utility billing has some flexibility to be able to.
I don't know how my peers feel about it, but given we did talk about the social organizations, I would be in support of having, let's say, 100,000, I'm just throwing a number, as part of our cost in the enterprise fund, to take care of the truly needy ones. I don't know how we decide who deserves it.
Actually, we stay out of that business because that's what we have Metro Crest for. So we're able to, well, yeah, go ahead.
Regina's here, she's our utility billing manager, so she can tell you a little bit of what we do.
Yeah, like Mike mentioned, it's a case-to-case basis, but we do try to help where we can. Like you mentioned, we do payment plans, and we also work closely with organizations such as Metro Crest and a couple of others. So we do provide that info and try to work with the customer as much as we can, because we do know people are going through things, so we do. So yeah, we work closely with Metro Crest and let them get information.
So Metro Crest has utility billing assistance. You fund significantly Metro Crest services. There are Capella residents who use Metro Crest services, and that's a way.
They're probably best suited to handle this and then debt. Thank you.
Any other questions? So Jerry, Kim used to be known as our water lady. Or was it water girl? One or the other.
One or the other.
Water lady. I'm, I'm being corrected down here, water lady. What shall we call you?
I can be the water guy.
Okay.
Water boy.
Water man.
Adam Sandler movie, water boy.
I think I'll just stick with Jerry.
Same with Kim, okay. So you, you didn't go through the, the automated meter system. Yeah, I've never seen Kim get so excited over something as, as that project, so anyway.
That's fine.
That was your words, not mine. Any other questions for Jerry? I do have a question, and maybe this isn't for you guys, but where do we stand on our second, our water backup? What do we call it?
The redundancy program?
Thank you, redundancy program.
It's, it's still on schedule before the end of the year.
This year? Oh, excellent, okay, nevermind, good answer. All right, thank you, good answer, Jerry. Great job, Jerry. Any other questions on water and sewer budget? You guys have any, any concluding remarks, or is that it?
I got thirsty.
We'll be before you sometime in August, we'll be before you sometime in October or November to discuss how rates are doing for the water sewer fund.
Wonderful. All right, thank you very much. And to everybody presented tonight, thank you very much, just for Jerry, Kim, that was very, very well done. Item number six is citizens' appearance. Had no one signed up, we will skip over that. There being no further business before this council, we are adjourned at 8:28 PM.